Good evening. I'm Peggy Kvam, a member of the League of Women Voters of Minnetoka Ian Prairie-Hopkins and your moderator for the Hennepin County Commissioner District 6 Candidate Forum. I would like to welcome our candidates and our viewers on behalf of our hosts, the League of Women Voters Chapter of South Tonka and the Lake Minnetoka Cable Commission. The League of Women Voters, a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidates directly. Tonight's questions have been submitted in advance. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. Questions become the property of LWV. The election for Hennepin County Commissioner District 6 will take place on Tuesday, November 3rd, with absentee voting now in progress. There is no party designation for this office. I will now introduce the two candidates for the Hennepin County Commissioner District 6 General Election in alphabetical order. If you could just acknowledge the camera, Dario Anselmo and Chris Latandras. This one-hour candidate forum will begin with two-minute opening statements. Following that, the candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to each question, which were submitted by the public in advance. Both candidates will be called on to answer every question and in an alternating order. Our forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. We will now begin with two-minute opening statements, starting with Chris Latandras. Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and for all of you tuning in across our district tonight. My name's Chris Latandras, the DFL and Labor Endorsed Candidate for Hennepin County Commissioner. I served in the Obama Administration at USAID as Vice Chair of the Hopkins School Board. I'm leading our community through the COVID pandemic. And as the spouse of a nurse practitioner at Hennepin Healthcare, I can tell you, believe me, when I say our family feels the weight of this pandemic every single day, we know folks are hurting because that pain's our own. I'm running because we're living in these extraordinary times and we need good government now more than ever. With Commissioner Jan Callison's retirement, we've got some pretty big shoes to fill. She's been an exemplary public servant over many years and we all owe her a debt of gratitude. And that's why I'm so proud to have her endorsement and leaders across the spectrum, like Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, former Governor Arnie Carlson, and dozens more nonpartisan leaders in local government across our district. You see, they understand just how important this job is. Hennepin County's Minnesota's largest local government with a $2.5 billion budget put to work for you. I've devoted my entire career to public service because I believe in the simple promise that while government can't do it alone, government can make people's lives better. And that promise is being tested today. From a pandemic that's taken lives, shaken our economy, and shown just how important and how fragile our local governments are, to the events set in motion by George Floyd's murder right here in Hennepin County, it's almost like a veil has been ripped back. And there's so much riding on this moment and how we respond. So here's what I know. If you want to elect someone with experience, working at all levels of government, skills that can only come from leading in a $100 million institution, our schools, through this crisis, and someone with a track record of reaching across our lines of difference, even when we face tough issues, then I'm asking for your vote to serve as your next Hennepin County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dario Anselmo.
Welcome and thank you. Appreciate the League handling this and your mission to not only get more people to vote, but make sure that they're informed. And this process helps, and I hope a lot of people watch this and keep the good work and the mission going. My name is Dario Anselmo. I'm running for District 6, Hennepin County Commissioner. The job of a Hennepin County Commissioner is an important one, and it covers a wide variety of policy and areas: the environment, public safety, property taxes, mental health, transportation, a $2.5 billion budget. 1.2 million people live in Hennepin County. What's one-fifth of the state's population? One-third of the jobs are created here. So it's not only a big impact just where we're living, but on the whole state and the whole region. I'm looking to use my 35-year career as an entrepreneur, a business owner, a nonprofit leader, and a former state representative. I'm looking to use these experiences to work on key policy areas, and I hope to talk more about these and share my experiences both personally, professionally, in mental health, in public safety, property taxes, and the environment again. We are living in some tough times right now. We seem to disagree on way more things than I can ever remember. I grew up in a politically divided family. I had a father who was a Democrat, a mother who was Republican. I grew up in a family of six kids, ultimately in a blended family, and I was used to that. You know, agreeing and disagreeing is something that comes to my nature and to my heart. My purple campaign message has really been about bringing red and blue together. That's the purple. It's not the Minnesota Vikings. It is if they win. And I want to keep working on these things. I want to put people and principles before partisan politics. I want to make sure Hennepin County cannot just be a safety net. I want it to be a bridge to a better life. I also want to thank Chris for running and for being part of this dialogue. He's made me a better candidate. He cares deeply and passionately for his community. And I know after this is all done, we're going to figure out a way to make Hennepin County better. And I look forward to tonight's discussion, and thank you again.
Thank you. Now, we will begin the question and answer section of the forum. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond, and we will begin with Dario Anselmo for the first question. As Hennepin County Commissioner, you will have to address budget shortfalls, unexpected budget needs, economic crises, and the need for tax increases or budget tightening. What experience do you have with these situations, Dario Anselmo?
All goes back to probably my first startup company at age 21. You're doing it on a shoestring. You're trying to figure it out. It's a company that I grew to $25 million. After that, I'm running a downtown business in the middle of the warehouse district and an additional set of challenges. And when I served on and started business associations, the budgets kept getting bigger and bigger. And ultimately, being at the House of Representatives, I worked on a $12 billion education finance committee. So they're tough choices. You've got to add up what's important, and you sometimes have to make those tough choices to what to cut out. There are certain safety net things that are important that we keep, especially in the role of a Hennepin County Commissioner and the mission that they do that's so important.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
You know, there's no question that COVID-19 has taken a sledgehammer right through the heart of our local government budgets, and Hennepin isn't immune. We've got some tough choices in front of us. As Vice Chair of the Hopkins School Board, I've had to make these tough budget decisions, not just in the context of public school finance, but in the context of a pandemic. I am leading these crisis budget decisions right now in local government. And, you know, I think it's also true that our public needs to recognize we've got some tough decisions in front of us. We're not going to be in a position to tax our way out of this. Each 1% increase in property taxes only generates 8 million in new revenues for the county. That's less than one-half of 1% of our overall $2.5 billion budget. So it's not just about making tough choices. We got to be able to seek new partnerships and also get creative. That's what I've done on the Hopkins School Board. That's what I did in the Obama Administration, where we brought the private sector together with civil society to solve and address global food security issues. We were able to attract through some smaller government investment billions in outside financing to solve this problem. And we lifted 5 million families out of hunger. And, you know, on the Hopkins School Board, even just recently this year, I've had to cut 2.5 million out of our budget. But I've done that. Well, we've increased investments in student mental health, and we've attracted outside dollars to help us fight youth homelessness. It is possible, but you need partnerships and you need to get creative.
Thank you. So Chris is already starting to answer my next question. I don't know if he saw my script, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So we'll be starting with Chris Latandras. Following up on the last question, how would you prioritize and address Hennepin County program funding levels in 2021 under the constraint of a 0% property tax levy increase and significant pandemic-related needs?
Yeah, that's a great question, and thank you for it. So, as I mentioned, I think we're going to have to do this through partnerships, but also get creative about where we're going to go for those dollars. I mean, right now, first and foremost, we've got to focus on our mission. We've got to focus on those core services and human services and public health and public safety and make sure that we deliver on those promises to our public. But at the same time, you know, we've got massive homelessness and housing crisis right now. And I do think that if our governments can find billions of dollars to bond for things at the state level, for example, $500 billion almost in bonding for a stadium, we can figure out where to go and find money for really important investments that aren't just the right thing to do. We're going to need them to actually get through and come out on the other side of these budget shortfalls. And we can do it, and I've led on that.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
Well, right now, the 2021 budget is being put together, and the hearings are starting up. And they, you know, had to reduce the budget, something that I talked about early on in my candidacy when I talked about property taxes going up at what I thought and what I heard were sort of unsustainable rates for people. And now that hard line is having to be drawn. We're fortunate that we've got some care is funding that Hennepin County and other agencies and units and private businesses have been able to tap into. But, you know, where the budget got cut is on capital services, and that's the stuff that people in our district, you know, want to see and think that's what they're paying for. I think that they also know it's important that these safety net services are taken care of. Again, I think partnerships are key in getting our federal and our state partners. And I look forward to calling upon and leading that charge with the committee that will work with the state government and using those bipartisan relationships and the same thing at the federal level, because we need to get the money to match the mandates, and that's how it's going to work out. We can get more creative. Hennepin County does a good job. When I was looking at running for this, I asked a lot of questions and checked with people. They do a good job with their stuff. I'm sure there's more things that can be done. Data-driven decisions, all these words you hear knocked around, but I really want to take a look at it and dig deeper. But, you know, partnerships, community foundations, there's lots of things. We're going to have to figure it out largely ourselves.
Thank you. The next question. Data suggests that 25% of adults in the U.S. live with a diagnosable mental illness. As a Hennepin County Commissioner, how would you address decreasing the stigma as well as increasing awareness, funding, and programs for children and adults experiencing mental illness? And we will begin with Dario Anselmo.
Great question. You know, that goes back to, you know, for me, I had an early awareness of that. My father lived with a persistent mental illness. He was bipolar, and he was an amazing person, but it was a challenge. And the pressure and the stress of life, as well as his genetic makeup, you know, made me very aware of this, you know, back in the '60s and the '70s, when people with mental illness were not treated well. It's gotten better and better and better. I led a campaign for awareness and acceptance, and I did that at a sort of private, I say, nonprofit level. And I looked to do that at Hennepin County. We spent close to $100 million through a variety of ways. You know, prevention is a key thing, and getting to kids is a particular passion for me. When you look at teenage suicide and all of the other things that are going on, you know, it's at epidemic proportions. And that was before this happened. And when you add in the chemical abuse and you add in a lot of other things that are going on in our community, isolated seniors, unemployed moms and dads, we've got a lot that's going to be coming down the pipeline. But it's proactive. It's partnering. It's the schools. It's in businesses. I talked to a real estate group today that was a keynote speaker at it and said, "We need you to step up to make sure you can change your work schedules and invest in these people and give them the space and the time, and Hennepin County will meet you and work with you."
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
So I come at this as a school board member, and I have seen firsthand, up close and personally, the impacts of this pandemic on the mental health of our students. And there were rising health, mental health needs for our students in our community long before this pandemic ever got started. And that's why the future of government, whether we're talking about public safety, or we're talking about our schools, we're talking about our healthcare systems, is about realizing that mental health is a core component of this. I mentioned my wife is a nurse practitioner at Hennepin Healthcare. She works in the Coordinated Care Clinic, where they match each and every one of their patients who are struggling not just with health issues, but like healthcare issues, but mental health issues, chemical dependency challenges, homelessness. They wrap them around with a care team. It's these supportive services to improve outcomes for them, and mental health is a piece of that. It's the same in Hopkins Public Schools. I'm proud of what we've made to increase student mental health investments by $100,000 in a pandemic. That was made possible by some really tough budget choices to let a contract expire with the Minnetoka Police Department, something my opponent is spreading disinformation about in this race, which I'm really disappointed about. And finally, in our public safety systems, I'm talking with business leaders in our community. I'm talking with the Hennepin County Sheriff, and we have an opportunity to embed social workers and mental health professionals alongside of our public safety officials. That is the future of public safety. It's the future of medicine, and it's the future of our schools.
Thank you. Our next question is, as Hennepin County Commissioner, how would you work to assure that the diverse voices of all residents are included in how you govern? And we'll begin with Chris Latandras.
Yeah, you know, it's a great question, and it's an especially important question right now. You know, we have some serious, serious challenges right now. And I think we need to start with this, in this moment, that black lives matter, that George Floyd's life mattered. And in leaders in Minnesota, where we see some of the worst disparities in the nation on issues like healthcare, education, housing, and criminal justice, we can't simply continue business as usual and expect different results. And so I believe that systemic racism is real, and I support the Hennepin County Board's decision to declare racism, systemic racism, a public health crisis. That's how we've led on the Hopkins School Board as well. We've matched words with action. And on reforming our policies, so I'm Vice Chair of the Hopkins School Board, but that makes me Chair of our Policy and Monitoring Committee, I can tell you, we are looking at every single policy in our school district through the lens of inclusion, authentic inclusion, vigilant equity. And we can't do this work without ensuring that the voices of those that are most impacted by the decisions that we make and the failures of our system are at the table with us. So it's not just what I do, it's how I'm leading right now. These decisions, we're making better decisions when our community is at the table. That's how I'm leading in the Hopkins School Board. It's how I've led my whole career in government, and it's how I'll lead as your next Hennepin County Commissioner.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
Wonderful question. From the Hennepin County perspective, which is what I'll look at, and I looked at this early on in November, you know, they were working on and now have sort of a race and equity sort of committee, and it's going to be its own line, you know, and a unit of business at Hennepin County. And they've been doing this for a couple of years. So I'm hopeful to see what comes out of that. I'm looking forward to participating in that. And, you know, we need to all lead in our own lives and the conversations that we have. And I guess, you know, being a downtown business owner, you know, diversity is something that we celebrated and we needed. So, you know, that's a way of life with me and the people that I've worked with in government and nonprofit, and we need to continue to do that. We need to have those uncomfortable conversations, as well as finding more ways to bring people into it. I'm glad that Hennepin County has been leading in that way, and I think that we all want to participate and find more ways we can make a difference and include more people and make sure those voices are being heard and that we do the reforms that we need to in our public safety systems.
Thank you. The next question is, what committees do you think you could contribute the most to as a county commissioner and why? And we'll begin with Dario Anselmo.
I would say public safety would be one of them that I would be very interested in. Having spent a lot of time in that, I guess it might be a little bit of my DNA, having a father who was a judge and worked at the Attorney General's Office, having spent a lot of time downtown and worked with the various Hennepin County courts and people and officers, as well as sort of the merger that I see with mental health and the challenges that are going on. You know, the last year, I said, half the people in the criminal system, criminal justice system are experiencing a mental health crisis right now. And I would probably argue, you know, the other half had something leading up to it. So there's a lot of challenges we can do internally and merge those two areas that are important to me. You know, the government committee to work with people at the Capitol and the lobbying team is something that I'd also look forward to and trying to forge those bipartisan relationships. And whatever happens after November 3rd in this race, you know, there's going to be a partisan outcome between the two bodies that exist over the Capitol. There'll be the same governor that's there, and we're going to need to work on a way, and we're going to have to take those relationships that you have right now and build some new ones. So those are two big ones. And workforce development would be the last one. It's something that Hennepin County looks to partner with, and, you know, getting people jobs is a very important thing, and leading them down that pathway is something that I look forward to.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
Yeah, I think that the biggest, I want to serve where the biggest issues facing our county in the decade ahead are, I think, greater section right now than if we're talking about the pandemic and the economic impacts and the economic recovery. Honestly, I believe the single greatest issue that we can work on and invest in and grow movement together is solving our homelessness and housing crisis. There will be no economic recovery. There will be no future for this region without what I'm calling a Minnesota Marshall Plan for affordable housing. We need it. Otherwise, our future is going to be permanent Hoovervilles in city parks. So I would be honored to either chair or vice chair our HRA, where we've got transit-oriented development funds and housing incentive funds to put to good use towards that effort. But you know what? I also want to lead, and I want to grow those investments. Right now, we're throwing consistently, year after year, $10 million at a $500 million problem. We can't keep doing that and expecting a different result. So that's why I will work with our partners at the state. I've got great relationships with Governor Walz, Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan. I'm endorsed by a number of our legislators in District 6, and I'm ready to hit the ground running, working for them to make these investments in housing in our community.
Thank you. Our next question is, as you approach public leadership today, who is the individual you value most as your role model and why? And we'll begin with Chris Latandras.
Well, listen, there are so many leaders that I look up to and admire. I mean, my whole journey and path to public service started with watching my mom. She was a public school teacher in Hopkins Public Schools, a 40-year career, and she showed me that public service is a noble calling. You can make a good difference. And, you know, as I think about public leadership and the kind of leadership that I want to model on the county, I really look up to and admire Jan Callison, our current Commissioner, retiring Commissioner's leadership. And it's why I'm so grateful to have her endorsement in this race. You see, Jan Callison understands the unique, nonpartisan nature of local government. It doesn't work like a legislature where you try to build a majority, push your agenda through. If you get, you know, 50 votes plus one, local government, whether we're talking about our school boards, where I lead, or our city governments, is about a board of equals, seven members often, sometimes less, whose job it is to build those relationships, problem solve with limited resources on issues that don't have clear left or right answers. And where possible, and I think this is where some of the breakdown is happening today, lead and govern through consensus. Even where you disagree, figure out how to come to a decision that doesn't have a split vote. Jan Callison has modeled that kind of leadership in our community her entire career, and that's the legacy that I will continue in as your next Hennepin County Commissioner.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
Well, role models, I probably have maybe two that are out there. One, historical, Abe Lincoln, who had to deal in a very partisan world. And even though I'm actually the nonpartisan candidate, nonendorsed by a major party in this race, I get that we live in a partisan world. And I told you what I grew up with. Everyone on my team got this copy, A Team of Rivals. And I'm sure Chris has read this too. And it's amazing how you can take these people with different viewpoints and bring them and help them take you in the right direction. Jim Ramstead was that person for me, I'm happy to say, as I'll drop one endorsement in here, and that's it. And having his endorsement is mental block to me. And I like the way he governed as our congressman, and his humility and his humanness is really what made it work for me, and the fact that he was a passionate person for mental health and addiction and recovery, and found a way to really work with people and bring them together. And that's something that I think is important and something that I will continue to do as I've done through my whole life.
Thank you. Next question is, how will you ensure that the Sheriff's Department is fully trained in mental illness, crisis intervention, and de-escalation? We'll begin with Dario Anselmo.
Well, it's good that they're doing that now. And they've been, again, as I've looked at these things, their trading protocols are some of the top in the country, and they've done a good job. And it's an important part of a budget of $400 million. We spent about 115 on the Sheriff's Department. And crisis intervention training is something key. I spoke out about that at a Minneapolis hearing a long time ago when a police chief was being confirmed. And we need to make sure we find ways to de-escalate, and including the right CIT professionals on calls would be helpful. It's a tough thing to do when you're getting a 911 call and you're having to send people out and you're having to deal with people in crisis. But more training, and I think their culture there at Hennepin County is a little different than its neighbor. And I think we need to keep, you know, working on that. And, you know, it's a holistic system, and we need to keep bringing in more professionals for training. We need to spend the dollars, and that's why maintaining that budget will be key.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
Yeah, listen, I think it starts with forming a really solid relationship with our incredible Hennepin County Sheriff, Dave Hutch. And, you know, he and I have been having these conversations for a long time about our really important role of public safety in Hennepin County. You know, I think, when I think about the fundamental roles of government, public safety and equal justice are sort of those two most cherished and fundamental promises. And I do think broadly, and this isn't to blame any individual leader, we're failing as a society at both. I think it's important to say that I oppose defunding the police. I oppose defunding the Sheriff's Department. I opposed the destruction of property this summer. I've been clear about that. But I also don't know how anyone can watch those horrific 8 minutes and 46 seconds where George Floyd's life was snuffed out by an officer sworn to serve and protect our whole community and not believe that we need serious reforms. And I think that the good news is that there is a lot that we can do in Hennepin County with these intersections between one of the largest public safety offices in the country and one of the largest human services, or public safety offices in the state, and one of the largest human services offices in the state. You know, I think number one is we need to look to expand our co-responder model to dispatch more mental health professionals and social work alongside of our officers and deputies. And I think we really can embed some of those same supports in our 911 dispatch center. We run one of the largest ones in the region, and I think both of those areas would be good places to start.
Thank you. So our next question's a little long, but you'll know what it's about when I get to the end. And we'll be starting with Chris Latandras. The current economic and pandemic situation has forced residents into difficult shelter arrangements, including tent encampments in Minneapolis parks. As a Hennepin County Commissioner, what are your ideas for increasing affordable housing?
Yeah, you know, I think it's a really important question, and I've touched on it a couple of times tonight, but I'm really excited to be able to go deeper. When I think about the intersection of public policy, budget, and housing, for me, it really comes down to three principles that our public needs to understand. Number one is that the best way to end homelessness is to prevent it from happening in the first place. And that's why I'm so proud of the investments that we've made in Hopkins Public Schools. One of the first calls that I made when elected was to a buddy of mine in the Obama Administration who led the President's Interagency Task Force on Youth Homelessness. And I said, "What ideas are happening there around the country that could benefit our students?" And right now in Hopkins, we've brought a national pilot to reduce youth homelessness, match families with the resources we need to prevent homelessness from occurring. Principle number two, housing costs lots of money, but it's far less expensive than homelessness. And that's what we see across our government services, is when people are in crisis, we need to meet those needs. But crisis is expensive. Going upstream and making those investments is always a smarter choice, especially at a time of scarce, you know, public budgets and rising need. And finally, thirdly, housing instability doesn't only harm those who are insecure. It hurts all of us, and we're seeing the impact of that right now. What are becoming potentially, you know, homeless encampments in our parks across Minneapolis, that will affect our ability to economically recover as a region. So these investments we make, even if you're not housing insecure, you should care about how we handle these issues moving forward.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
Well, you know, the two areas that are really important, when we have a crisis, you know, we have to lead and we have to act. And having tent villages pop up in our public parks is not an acceptable solution for anyone, for the neighbors and for the people that are going through crisis. I've looked at companies in California that are looking at the challenges they have out there that are, you know, five and tenfold worse, and looking at modular living units that you can get going quickly to take care of people so they can have some humanity and some dignity as you transition. We don't want to institutionalize homelessness. We want to transition people. We need to have the wraparound services that are there. We need to make those investments, and that's what Hennepin County does. It's a safety net. We need to keep making the investments that we've done with the AHEF funds and keep growing those affordable housing units for people that are on the margins. The 30% of AMI is important that we take care of that population and help keep transitioning them and getting them to the next step. And Hennepin County is that place to do that, and I look forward to meeting that challenge.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to a new topic. Climate change is one of the biggest issues being discussed globally. What are your thoughts on climate change, and what could you do to address it in Hennepin County? And we will begin with Dario Anselmo.
Climate change is very real. It's a clear and present danger that is sort of, you know, a little bit off the radar right now, even though- know, a little bit off the radar right now, even though everyone that I talk to, and you need to take action on that. You need to lead by example. That's why I put solar panels on my home four years ago. You know, Hennepin County does a lot in sustainability in terms of climate change policy. That's a state and federal issue. So, you know, there is a committee in place at Hennepin County, and that they're in the early stages of planning out a very well-thought-out. There's a 20-page document online, if people want to take a look at that. And we need to do that. And a lot of what Hennepin County does in the climate spaces and water quality issues, and that's affected by climate. So we need to take the actions. We need to make those investments. You know, our policies matter, but we need to make sure the state and the federal government gets there to take those actions that are needed. But the sustainability program and planning that they're working on, I'm supportive of, and I look forward to being a part of that.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
Yeah, I believe the scientists on this, the accelerating impacts of climate change do represent a clear and present danger to our way of life as Minnesotans and to our children's futures. And I really do think that our local governments have an opportunity to lead the way on this, as Minnesota's largest county, Hennepin County, must take bold, resilient action. And as your next commissioner, I'm committed to providing that leadership. Listen, I think we need to help Minnesotans imagine a future where more of our vehicles are powered by homegrown energy like solar and wind, and more of our total miles traveled include walking, biking, and transit. And I think in county government, that means, number one, harnessing the full potential of Southwest Light Rail, which runs right through the heart of District Six. It means ensuring that our transit dollars stay dedicated to transit uses, and I'm committed to that, making sure those funds don't go to other sources or uses. And I think it also means fully electrifying our publicly-owned vehicle fleet. And so, and I do think it also means championing efforts already underway to deliver an ambitious climate action plan, which is underway right now. It's a new comprehensive set of recommendations across lines of business to find ways to improve Hennepin County's overall climate impact. And I think we need a commissioner who's committed to aligning our budget and policy decisions with whatever recommendations come out of that work.
Thank you. Next question will be starting with Chris Latandras. Do you believe certain historical monuments and statues should be removed and places renamed due to their association with racism and slavery? Why or why not?
Yeah, listen, you know, this is another one of those issues that I've said it before. I believe systemic racism is real. And, you know, I think underlying our long and painful summer of civil unrest are some dynamics and reckoning that's long overdue as Minnesotans. And we have to take that seriously. I don't support just, you know, damaging public property. But I do think for some of these symbols that have a painful history to our publics, we need a process in place to do that. And so I support a process. I support efforts to listen to our community, and where they're telling us there's that pain, to listen and not ignore our history on this.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
The clear answer is there needs to be a process and understanding. And our people have gone through sort of an evolution of where we're at with certain things. And certainly the Civil War sort of monuments that were built to hold people down in the South were not okay. And we had inadvertent examples of that with Lake Calhoun. But the process wasn't done the way it should have. The Minneapolis City Council and the other bodies who were making a political thing out of it wasn't helpful. And when we basically saw what amounted to almost a government allow with tearing down of a statue on the state Capitol grounds of Columbus, that's too much. It leads to a breakdown in dialogue. You know, people need to understand why the Columbus statue was built. It was built to honor Italian Americans who came to this state, and to tear that down without a dialogue, without a process, was hurtful, and it was divisive. And I think that people, you know, still feel that in our community. So you need to stand up for what's right and just not try to score political points on it.
Thank you. Our next question, do you support the resettlement of refugees in Hennepin County? Why or why not? We'll begin with Dario Anselmo.
Our, you know, as I say, our state and our community has always been welcoming to immigrants. I'm a product of that, and they settled and came from, I thought, some pretty cool countries like Norway and Italy, and ended up in northern Minnesota. And there's a lot of people in our community that have come from a lot of other places in South Asia and East Africa. And I think we need to be a welcoming place. We need to be that beacon of open light. And we certainly have to match the programs to that. I think we don't want to get ahead of ourselves in certain ways, and it seems to be more of a political discussion that's out there to divide people and not bring people in. So, and this whole discussion of sanctuary cities and all of these other things that go on, it's not helpful. But, you know, I think we are welcoming people. We need to continue to do that, and I think it's important for our growth of our economy.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
Yeah, you know, one of the biggest honors and proudest moments in my life in public service was getting sworn onto the Hopkins School Board alongside Fatun Ahmed, the first ever Somali-American woman elected to a school board anywhere in the country. And one of the reasons I ran for school board in the first place was the opportunity to see a school board, and alongside Fatun, was to see a school board that better reflected our community. That's what we need in local government. And, you know, I've been pretty disappointed to see, you know, local government, a lot of people, you know, see it as sort of the last bastion of good government, where, when possible, these, you know, big federal polarizing issues don't insert themselves. And we've had an administration in Washington, DC, that has tried to do whatever it can to divide us locally. And President Trump's executive order kicking the buck to counties to try to make the decision, have to take a public vote on this issue, was designed to do exactly that. I would say that the President's recent tax package was designed to do that, capping state and local deductions at $10,000 a year. I've seen the impact of that in local governments at our truth and taxation hearings, where people are realizing the impact of their local property taxes, and they should. They should care about where those dollars go. But with that cap, it's, you know, the federal government is taking dollars out of their, dollars that used to go to state and local governments, taking them out of their pockets to pay for those tax cuts, and it's polarized us locally. So we need to get back to good local government.
Thank you. Next question is sharp but sweet. How do we prevent gun violence in Hennepin County? We'll begin with Chris Latandras.
Yeah, listen, this is an issue that is front and center for our campaign, and it's something, you know, that we really need to get out in front of. I want to see Hennepin County be a leader on this. And I think it starts with, you know, the investments that we're making. You know, the number one cause of gun violence and gun death in the state of Minnesota is death by suicide. And we can, you know, we need to remove the stigmas around mental health, and we need to get people the supports that they need so they're not in a position where they're making a desperate choice. I think that we also need to look around the country. And as a commissioner, I'm committed to studying gun buyback programs around the country. There have been county programs that have led gun buyback efforts that have resulted in getting dangerous weapons off the streets. And, you know, I think we need to study the issue. I know there's versions of that that work better than others. We need to see what works and what doesn't. But I don't see any reason why Hennepin County can't be a leader on this.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
I think there's three things that we can do, and one of them I led at the State Capitol, and it was, you know, the issue of conviction of being out there and standing for something that, you know, parties don't always stand up for, and that's having background checks. It seems like a pretty straightforward thing. We have a permit-to-purchase system, and just to carry that out, it needs to be reasonable, and it not needs to be designed to fail, which is sort of ultimately what happens in partisan politics. We need to look at gun safety programs. When I look at, you know, the amount of gun deaths that happen here, 80% are suicides. And, you know, more of that happens outside of Hennepin County. We have more homicides in Hennepin County and in downtown Minneapolis, unfortunately way too many. So we need to work on programs for that aspect of it. And the mental health component is really key, and that's getting out to the communities and making sure people aren't in that situation. The gun buyback programs I've looked at, you know, they largely are way too much money for what the return is. I think they're just a better use of our resources than that.
Thank you. Next question is, should Hennepin County take on any of the financial burden of rebuilding the business areas destroyed by rioters in Minneapolis? We'll begin with Dario Anselmo.
I don't think it has the capabilities to do that. You know, that's the difficulty with that. There's a lot of things you could wish that could happen, but we don't have that capability. The state of Minnesota would be the more likely source to do that, if not the federal government. And it's unfortunate when you have riots that do what they do to all of these businesses. And having one of those businesses downtown that was fortunately, you know, not damaged too badly in that, I'm unbelievably empathetic to what's happening. And the county is at least spending some money and getting some grants to some businesses. You know, the process and the snafu that went on with the city of Minneapolis and Hennepin County, not allowing them to get permits to carry things away until they paid their property taxes with no money, that enrages me. These are people that have been harmed. But, you know, the county can do things, you know, spending money, unfortunately, just not something that we can do in that space. But it makes my blood boil when I think of what those businesses have gone through and the way they've sort of been left out there, not a lot of support at the state at federal level.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
Yeah, listen, I think what we're just hearing is that there's no role for Hennepin County in helping respond to the single greatest incident of civil unrest just about in U.S. modern history. And the notion that Hennepin County really doesn't have much that we can do about that, I think is frankly irresponsible and cold-hearted at this time in our history. There are things we can do. We are doing them already. I really respect the buyer, Chair Marion Green's leadership in trying to figure out where you can take, no, we can't solve all these problems. We can't do it alone. But where can we take some seed money from the county and find partners in the private sector that are willing to lead together? It's seeing the leadership role of government in playing that convening role, not solving the whole problem, not bringing all of the resources to the table, but bringing some seed money to the table to attract investment and to solve some of these problems together. That's exactly the kind of leadership that I provided in the Obama administration, where through the Feed the Future program, we put in, I mean, this is a much, it's a federal sum, but, you know, we were able to put in some money that generated from the private sector, $3.5 billion in agricultural sales, or $3.5 billion in private funding for food security that unlocked $13 billion in investments in food security and lifted 5 million families out of poverty. That wasn't government money doing that, but it was government leadership that made it possible. And that's the kind of leadership that our community, when we're hurting and need to rebuild so desperately needs right now, especially in these neighborhoods that have been hit the hardest from our long summer and our painful summer of civil unrest.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Chris Latandras. What do you think Hennepin County should be doing to address the overdose deaths and opioid crisis in our community? Chris?
Yeah, you know, this is, again, one of those issues that I talked about, my wife's role as a nurse practitioner. Before her current role at Hennepin Healthcare, she was actually at the Indian Health Board in Little Earth, and that's ground zero for our urban opioid epidemic here in the state of Minnesota. And she saw up close and personal what happens when we fail to prevent those opioid addictions in the first place. So that's the work that they were doing there, is responding to crisis. As I said, it's really expensive, and there's a human toll, and we have to deal with people in crisis. Now she's working for a system where they're dealing with prevention. She has patients where they're getting them the care that they need, getting them the drugs that they need in order to prevent them from falling into opioid addiction to begin with. So we have programs that are already working right now that, you know, I think one of the major opportunities as we look to the future with a world-class health system in Hennepin Healthcare and one of the largest human services departments in the state, to figure out how to break down some of those barriers where we're matching more and more people who are in our health system with the social work and mental health and chemical dependency and addiction treatments they need, and vice versa, and making sure that those folks who are relying on county services are really getting the health care that they need. And oh, by the way, if we don't solve housing, all of it's going to be for naught, because that is one of the reasons why these addictions and really deaths of hopelessness start to begin with.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
Well, it certainly is a challenge, and this has been going on for a long time. The opioid crisis, of course, was something happening in rural and greater Minnesota and across the Midwest. And it's, you know, like any addiction, during times of stress, it's going to get worse. And Hennepin County plays that safety net. It's going to continue to need to do that. And it's, you know, it can get ahead of certain things. Unfortunately, you know, it can't solve every issue that's out there. I think in our criminal justice system is maybe an opportunity. And we look at some of the alternative courts and the special courts that exist. You know, Hennepin County's been doing that, and we need to continue to support that. And people that end up in our jails as well as our hospitals, let's transition them out. Let's not have them going to jail. Let's get them to help. You know, prevention's great. You know, in a tough economy, we're going to be doing a lot of triage at this point. And the mental health services, the wraparound services, and the supportive housing are key. So it's a holistic approach that we're going to have to take, and Hennepin County is leading, and I look to continue that charge.
Thank you. This is a repeat question from the spring's primary election forum, and the audience will be interested to hear how your thoughts have evolved over the summer and fall. What would you do to address social justice, equity, and equality as county commissioner? And we'll begin with Dario Anselmo.
Well, I think the steps that Hennepin County was taking before this all happened, you know, have to be rewarded, and we have to participate and have the buy-in. And I think, you know, having a separate line of business that deals with it as opposed to all the other ways that it's addressed. I mean, every document that I've gone through, it's been talked about, and that will be the next step. And I'm looking forward to seeing how that works with community members, with people that work in Hennepin County. And I think having those, again, those conversations individually for those of us that live in the suburbs and look like Chris and I are really important to do. Again, I've been doing that for 25, 30 years, being downtown, and now you've got to carry it out to the suburbs. What else are the barriers, and how do we break those down? And it's just about having those conversations. But I'm glad that there's a separate line that is set up, and I think that all of us are willing and going to be supportive of that.
Thank you. Chris Latandras.
Yeah, you know, I said it earlier tonight, but as leaders in Minnesota, where we see some of the worst racial disparities in the nation on issues like healthcare, on education, on housing, criminal justice, we simply can't afford to continue business as usual without really looking in the mirror and moving in a different direction. And, you know, I think it comes down to whether or not we're delivering on that basic American promise of equal justice and equal opportunity for all. And I think what we're seeing as a nation in this moment is what happens when we fail to deliver on that promise. And I think it may very well be the defining issue facing Hennepin County government in the decade ahead. I mean, we're seeing it both in needed reforms to our criminal justice system. We're seeing it in reforms that we're going to have to make to our human services, to reduce those racial disparities. And, you know, we're seeing it in our need to respond to the way communities are hurting in response to the civil unrest. And, you know, after the civil unrest that we experienced earlier this summer after George Floyd's death, you know, I, one of the first calls I made was to my friend Devonna Pittman, who had just started a open-air food bank, basically at the corner of Broadway and Emerson. And over, you know, three days, that grew into a huge mobilization of community responding to community needs. That's where the relationships happen around that kind of service. That's where the healing happens, and that's how we're going to make good decisions.
Thank you. We have now come to the last question I have here. We'll be starting with Chris Latandras. What excites you the most about serving as Hennepin County Commissioner?
Well, I've said it already. I've given my entire professional life to public service because I really believe in the power of government to make a positive difference in people's lives. I've seen it. I've seen it from the investments that we made at the federal level in the Obama years, lifting 5 million families around the world out of hunger and food insecurity, and really, you know, tapping our strengths as Americans, you know, tapping the ingenuity of our private sector to do that, tapping the compassion of our civil society to do that, bringing citizen problem solvers to the table like we also did in the Obama administration. I led on efforts around a platform called challenge.gov, where we brought citizen problem solvers to the table to come up with creative solutions, like how do you use technology to fight human trafficking? That's something I worked on. And I see the impact as a school board leader as well, when we can bring a program to Hopkins that we see in just a few short months prevents, you know, 70 families from falling into homelessness at a time when so many of our families are hurting. So I think that's really the opportunity to serve our public. It's the opportunity to heal and repair in the midst of just extraordinary moment in our history. in our history. I'm up to the task because I've done it my entire career.
Thank you. Dario Anselmo.
Well, it's no secret that I've got a passion for people and connecting and finding new ways to do that. And I generally take a little bit of an outsider's perspective, even though I truly have a lot of those connections to those insider institutions, and I want to find a way to merge them. And I think, you know, having had that business life and that creative part of my life and a strong commitment to public service that's been in my family, that I have and that my kids are now sharing are important, and I want to make sure that those unheard voices are helped in all the ways that they can, whether it's the struggling first generation business that's trying to cut through things to making sure issues like mental health, you know, sort of get the legitimacy and the hearing, because I know what that felt like to be the child of someone having a persistent mental illness and how painful it was. And just being able to talk about that during this campaign has made me excited, and it's been one of the number one reasons that people have sort of been happy that I've been doing this. They thought I would maybe be concerned about taxes or roads. I said, yes, they're all important, and I'm looking forward to taking that. I'm looking forward to really represent the people here with the centrist leadership and the ability to cross, you know, lines. And that also, you know, makes me excited. I don't know if I would have hopped into the race knowing what I knew in October at this point, and I stopped myself. I go, yes, absolutely, absolutely I would, because we need people to be uniders, to pull people together and to get stuff done, and that's what I do. And I'm going to go, I'm going to serve, and when it's time to be done, I'll be done.
Thank you. We'll now wrap it up with closing remarks, beginning with Dario Anselmo.
Thank you. Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It's a little different format that I've done in prior elections, but it seems to be going well. And thank you again also to Chris for the lively discussion and the always disputed debate online and other places too, which is, which is wonderful. When you elect me as your next county commissioner, you get someone who's going to listen, who's going to learn, who's going to continue to lead. Our elected leaders need to really be active listeners to what's going on with the residents and the businesses in their community. When they don't do that, that's when we have problems, and we get the unintended consequences of government. And I know that from having been on both sides of this scenario. You need a leader who feels comfortable meeting with people face to face and on Zoom if it's needed. I did that when I was at the Capitol. I've done that for decades of my life in profit and nonprofits. I led on issues that weren't always comfortable, like gun safety, education, climate, and conservation. I purposely surround myself with people that are different than me, that have different political perspectives. I like that creative tension that comes out of it. I listen, I learn, and I do it one person at a time, and I take that and I put that together. I'll be a better commissioner because of that. I have the experience that matters. I won't just fight for you. I'll work for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Chris Latandras.
You know, I want to thank the League of Women Voters again for just shining a light through events like this that help all of us see better in these perilous times and make better decisions in voters at a time when, you know, I think even a lot of us just feel like the foundations are shaking underneath our communities, our economy, and even our democracy. So the work you're doing is so important. I also want to express my gratitude to all my colleagues serving in local government across Minnesota who are serving our community so well through this pandemic, in our public schools, in city government, at the county level. It's not been easy. Sometimes I say, you know, leading in local government through this pandemic feels like a little, a little like Apollo 13. There's no manual for the kind of decisions we have to make every single day to serve our community, but our communities are stronger because of you. And finally, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you who will cast a vote in this race. This election is in your hands now, and the path that we choose is up to you. And I'm asking you to see through the fear and the disinformation and the division of this political moment. And I'm asking you to say yes to a politics of courage, a politics of competence, and a politics of just basic kindness, going out of our way to take care of each other, especially in these challenging times. The central promise of this campaign has always been that we'll win this election by loving our neighbors well through these challenging times. You are making that true every single day through your decisions to cast votes in this, in this race towards that vision. So I'm asking for your vote, and I look forward to leading our community together in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates, to the League of Women Voters volunteers, and to those viewing this event on cable and video for your participation in this candidate forum. This forum will be rebroadcast on LMCC repeatedly until the election on November 3rd. You can also see Lake Minnetaka Community Cable at lmcc-tv.org for a link to the streaming video. This event was brought to you by the League of Women Voters Chapter of South Tonka and Lake Minnetaka Community Cable. Good night.